Everyone, please join me in the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, roll call, please.
I'm Chuck Davis.
Here.
Councilman Mike Guley.
Here.
Councilman Cory Oxford.
Here.
Councilman Bill Barker.
Here.
Councilman Jerry Flea.
Okay, has everybody had a chance to look at this agenda? It's for malt liquor license transfer to the pin and harvest. And, uh... Any questions, concerns about the agenda? Do you have a motion to approve the agenda as read?
I would make a motion to approve this agenda as read.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, this is actually just the public hearing. See? And I'm gonna open this up to you, Mr. Moore. Have you got any problems with the transfer of this liquor license?
I do not. It's gonna be the same as the license that was already at Hugis, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I have no concerns with that.
Uh, when you had, uh, when the malt had this, Danny Bureau, did you have any problems at the malt with him having a liquor license? Where we was called in?
We had no alcohol violations reported to us or anything with the malt or firewater.
Okay, that was my biggest concern. Is there anybody from the public would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, is there anything from the council that they'd like to say? Okay, seeing none, I'll leave it open until 10 till. If somebody comes in, if nobody comes in by 10 till, we'll close the public there.
The state did come back to me and there was three corrections that had to be made on the application itself.
Okay.
Um, one was doing business as, when he filled out his application, he left that blank. So to get the pin and harvest there. Um, the other one...
Can you give me a page number on that?
I'm on the very...
Uh, where's those applications?
I did attach the new application to the very back. You see the old one?
Pardon?
You see the old one?
Yeah.
Okay, so where it says doing business as with the left blank. And then if you go to it the back, right, has the pin and harvest. On this, Department of, um, Public Health, when he applied for his license, they didn't know the name of his business yet. So it was listed as Danny Bureau. But they had, he sent me the new one and it does have pin and harvest on that now. As far as till lease, um, only Danny was listed on the lease. As the tenant and it had to have pin and harvest on that too. And he just got that one back to me last week, so.
So all corrections are made and the Liquor Commission's happy?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it looks all in order. Any further discussion? Are you guys here for the public hearing on a liquor license?
Not.
Okay. Would you like to comment on it? Thank you. Well, seeing there's no comments, uh, do I have a motion to go ahead and close this public hearing?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and close the public hearing.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is closed. You can go relax for a while if you want to.
For my eight minutes?
Well, maybe ten. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Chuck Davis?
Here.
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 Okay, we have a quorum. We'll proceed. Has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda for tonight's meeting? Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda? Thank you. The number fourteen under Town Hall. Are there any other additions that need to be added? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the one amendment? Uh, the liquor license, we just had a public hearing on?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as read, except for the...
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move on to approval of the minutes from, uh, the August fifteenth or April fifteenth meeting. Uh, are there any additions or corrections that someone would like to see in there? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the last month's meeting?
I'll make the motion to approve last month's minutes.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we'll move on to approval of the bills. And we had deposits in the amount of three hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seven cents. Counts payable in the amount of sixty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. Transmittals in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, thirty-seven dollars and fifteen cents. Payroll in the amount of fifty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-six cents. Any questions? Do you have a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move on to correspondence. A word from WAM.
Um, the word from WAM is, um, especially in municipalities. Um, it just gives an update on what been going on in the WAM. And they've had a P board meetings, legislation. To recap what other things been going on.
The biggest thing I wanted to get out in there are the registration for the summer convention. And, uh, if you want to attend, it's eleventh through the thirteenth in Cheyenne from June. And everyone's welcome. Uh, if you do, get with Jim next week and let her know so she can get us registered and signed up. Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to items from the public. Uh, we have a special event application from HF Sinclair. They're wanting to reserve, um, Vestran's Island for June twelfth, twenty twenty-five from three PM till nine PM. Uh... Do you have any issues with that, chief?
Uh, no, the only thing I saw on the permit is just, I don't know if anyone's there. I wanted to make sure they'd actually be done by nine PM because that's when the island closes. Otherwise, if they're needing more time for cleanup by city ordinance, we can extend that out to eleven.
Okay, we'll, uh... We'll check with them on that, but hopefully they'll be cleaned up by nine and everything.
Yeah, I have no issues with it or the open container portion.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, any of the council members have any questions?
No.
Anybody from the public have any questions? Do I have a motion to go ahead and approve this special events for HF Sinclair? June twelfth, twenty twenty-five from three thirty PM till nine PM?
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moving on. Uh, we have Kathy Beck with us tonight on Zoom. And she's here to talk about CCPN. Kathy?
Hi there. Good night. Can you all hear me?
Good. Thank you. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thanks for having me here. Um, I'm here to do our monthly update for Carbon County Prevention Network. So part of the packet that's available to the community members, just to remind you what opportunities you have coming up and what's going on with the program. Uh, the next virtual meeting is this coming Monday. There's information there. You can also check out Carbon County Prevention Network website. Um, if you access that through Public Health. Um, the next in-person is Monday, June ninth. The May's theme, this month's theme is mental health awareness. Um, so please take the time, um, to identify and investigate the importance of mental well-being. And there are some, um, resources available for you. So we're encouraging folks to take some time and opportunity to educate themselves. Um, there are resources available in the packet as well for folks to access if they're interested. And likewise on our Prevention Network website, the QPR training is that question persuade and refer training. Um, Rachel is a certified instructor in QPR. So if you're part of a group or a staff or an organization that's interested in holding a training and understanding, um, how to question, persuade, refer folks, um, and identify potential people at risk for suicide. It's a ninety-minute training and it is free to the public. So if you're interested, please reach out to Rachel. Um, there are some additional resources listed there. Our Monday, May twelfth meeting, is that noon? So you can call into that. Um, there will have a number of presenters, um, talking about suicide prevention in, in the programs we have available in Wyoming. Uh, Sources of Strength, we've mentioned this in the past. It's that youth suicide prevention and mental health promotion program that helps prevent adverse outcomes by, um, allowing opportunity for folks to get together. Promotes connection and boosts resilience. And it's a strength-based approach. We had an orientation. We invited businesses and organizations throughout the community and had a meeting, uh, May, or I'm sorry, April twenty-fifth, just a couple of weeks ago. We had a really great turnout. Fifteen people, um, attended the meeting. Um, it was our first community engagement gathering from businesses and school district members and, uh, community members. And so we're looking at ways to, to put together a plan to, um, launch some more programming for Sources of Strength in our communities. Rachel's also going to hold another gathering to share the purpose of Sources of Strength in encampment in Riverside this coming Monday, uh, May twelfth at five thirty. It's just an hour-long gathering, um, just introduces folks. She shares information and then gives people an opportunity to share some feedback and suggestions. It's taking place, again, in Camp at Riverside. It's in the Pine Lodge, um, the lobby of the Pine Lodge Hotel over there. So if anybody's interested, um, the upcoming valley opportunities. I mentioned when I reported in April that we have that connect program that's available to Carbon County. So that's that ways that we can work together to work through tragedy and, um, traumatic deaths in the communities. So we'll be announcing when we're gonna have a gathering and get together for that. So if anybody's interested, please reach out to Rachel or to me. Um, our information is available here and on the website. You're on Facebook. And then, um, you can reach out even to Town Hall and they can get phone numbers for you. So that's all. I just wanted to do our regular check-in and let people know what's happening with the program. And if anybody's interested at all, would like to learn more, we're happy to share and pro for you.
Thanks, Kathy. Are you posting your brochures around town?
We are. We're hanging some things around town, um, and Facebook mainly, Instagram and Facebook. Um, we have printed off a number of different flyers. So if we're running a certain theme and sharing information about Prevention Network, you will see them in, um, restaurants and local, like, uh, common areas. I would say I would describe it that way and at the schools.
Well, we just want to make sure the word's getting out and I, so...
Yeah, definitely in the front foyer, if folks are coming, dropping off their check for town bills, that kind of thing, out front at Town Hall, the library, any of the schools, and then, uh, bank for years and, uh, restaurants and places like that. So keep an eye out. And if anybody has a place that they'd like us to drop off brochures, just let me know. Be sure to drop them off for you.
Okay. Thank you. Any, any other questions for Kathy?
I don't have any.
I don't have any. Okay, well, thank you very much, Kathy, and, uh...
Thanks.
We'll visit with you later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we'll move on to council comments. As council...
May I make a public comment? Been working with your staff, with Jennifer, and we basically already got it worked out, but thinking for the future, maybe for budget. There are ballfields over in my neighborhood over there. Fantastic. They're really great. But they've been being used for most of the month of April and into May. Last night, there was at least three different groups there, I think. Tonight, there's a group there. It's very busy. No porta-potties. Now, they're coming tomorrow. Jennifer and I have been working on this for a day or two. And, uh, I checked to see if it was, who was responsible. The little league told me that people that are working there said they don't put them in until their season starts. And so as a citizen, there's a fantastic ballfield in Saratoga. The town ballfield. The technicalities of who's in charge of what and who's fan for it doesn't really matter. But maybe if it's a budgetary item or something, you also need trashcans. So Jennifer and I hadn't talked about trashcans, but... So Jennifer and I hadn't talked about trash cans, but it's just something to be thinking about for future years. As soon as the snow's off of there and the mud's dry, people start using it. And we're great, glad to have them there. It's, it's a great asset to the town, but we just need porta potties. Trash cans as soon as the people start using them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Carter, you're on that board, correct? Has that been discussed? Do they, do you know?
Porta potties?
Porta potties and trash cans?
Um, it's mileage, there is trash cans down there. I got there at least once last year for adult softball.
Yeah.
Um, and porta potties, I believe is something that the rec department.
Okay, if I'm not.
For to be served.
We also put down a, a regular dumpster, didn't we? For softball?
There, I don't recall seeing a dumpster. The, there was trash cans by sunrise there for the adult.
Alright.
Um, and but.
Okay, with council's approval, can I work on this tomorrow and get that squared away?
Yeah, yep, you bet.
Okay, alright, we'll see, we'll get some stuff taken care of.
Thank you. It's a great asset.
Thanks Carter. Okay, any other comments from the public? Okay, we'll move on to reports from Town Hall. And we have, uh, first up will be Cindy Martinez. Brownfield grant assessment for program. Please, if you would, come on up with, with Emery. He's got you all set up.
Great, great. Thank you. Um, I'm Cindy Martinez. I'm with the Brownfields program. Um, and this is the state partnership for urban and rural redevelopment. This is Christina. She's um, she's our contractor.
Yeah, hi, um, I'm Christina Heagle and nice to meet you all. Um, I'm with theirs associates and we've been working with. The D E Q on their spur program now for a few years. Um. I am a ranch girl out of Laramie. Uh, grew up in Laramie with University of Wyoming, got my engineering degree there. Uh, left for a while, came back and one of the things I really wanted to do was work with communities to better them. And so Cindy has really has a heart for the communities and has been looking for grant funding to help communities be able to take care of. Buildings and properties that are maybe not getting back into your tax base. So, so her program is really now about redeveloping buildings and removing barriers for, for property owners. And it doesn't have to be a city of a building, it can be any building or property.
Privately owned?
Privately owned.
Private developer.
That if we can remove a barrier for them so that they can redevelop it, whether that's figuring out their planning, their economic development, environmental, whatever that is. This program does that. So I'll let her tell you more about the program.
So Christina's gonna jump in and we'll describe what we can do. So this is Brownfield's resources and funding uh for Wyoming communities. Sorry about the date, that was like our first try, but we had to cancel. Um, so um, this is just a, a definition of what a brownfield is and it's real property. It's an actual. Uh, building or a parcel or real property. Um, the expansion, redevelopment or reuse of which uh might be complicated by. Uh, contamination or the potential contamination. I mean, sometimes we're surprised by what is not in a building. Um, so that's, that's always a, a, a good surprise.
Yeah, it's always interesting that they say presence of contamination. So if we think about anything that's, you know, when I grew up. My dad was a rancher, EPA and DQ or four letter word, but um, but.
Not the boogeyman.
Yeah, and I really got to know these guys and, and they really, you know, it's not about. Brownfield is not about regulation and that's the really cool part about Brownfield is it has nothing to do with regulation, but has to do with community redevelopment. And that's what, what the money is there for. And so when it says presence of, it's really exciting because it can pretty reach me anything. Like anything from a, an old ranch property to a downtown building to, you know, an old refinery.
Right, well. Um, and so I just wanted to share some, some projects to illustrate what brownfields. Are and what they can be. And so on the left is a former Amaco Standard Midwest Refinery in Laramie. And I don't know if anybody remembers this property. It's there on Cedar Street. Um, and on the left you can see what it was in probably the twenties when it operated. I think it ceased in nineteen thirty two. Um, and below directly on the left is what was left behind. Um, and of course, you know. It's a college town, people were doing who knows what in the building. So um, it obviously wasn't on the tax rolls and wasn't uh redeveloped. In any meaningful way. Um, on the right is a, a pretty cool picture that was done uh by uh Doc. Whatever his name was, but he, he documented um all of that, you know, activity at the, at the site. And you can see the um, the demolition beginning there. Uh, so that was done uh through various partnerships. To redevelop that property, um, EPA, D E Q, uh, Laramie Rivers Conservation District.
City of Laramie.
City of Laramie, yeah. So and today, although I don't have the picture, it's a big Napa Auto Parts store there on Cedar Street in Laramie.
So it's where that bridge goes across, where the Napa Auto Store.
The Hardest Street.
So, yeah, so and honestly, we, we were able to come up with a solution for it. That was able to not worry as much about the contamination and we were able to use it for industrial purposes, like a Napa Auto Store. That, and the bridge to cover up the areas that were of concern and everything else is.
Right, yeah. Let's see, um, I don't know if anyone here is familiar with the former Acme, Acme Power Plant in Sheridan. It's um, a couple miles from Montana border. Uh, former um, power plant, um, long since uh ceased operation. Um, it's a huge building. Um, and uh, so it's another case study, good example of a brownfield redevelopment. Uh, they had so much asbestos. Um, it, it, it was just incredible. Um, there were like boxes of John's Mandel asbestos that had never been replaced. Um, I think uh. The latest count was over a thousand bags of abated asbestos. Um, you can see it on the left and it's in good shape. On the right, obviously it was like rips from components and walls. Um, not a good situation. But um, it's being abated through grant work, um partnerships, uh. State, federal, um, and Sheridan County Conservation District is, is the owner and they, they bought that um piece of property. With the express intent of cleaning it up. It fits with their conservation um mission.
Yeah, I don't think we have the pictures up here, but there's a plan now to, it's.
Uh, no.
That plan actually to have river access and.
Right.
And fishing access in that area.
Yeah, sits right on the Tongue River.
Yeah, we probably can't save the building, but we're gonna kind of keep some of the bricks and stuff and set them up for benches and things like that. Just give it a nod to the whole power plant, but the building is too bad a structure.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's pretty scary. People shouldn't be in there and shouldn't be using it, but. Um, let's see. Another one that we worked on years ago was uh Old Stoney, the Creek uh County Museum in Sundance. And um, people were very attached to that building. Uh, they had gone to school there. I think it was a K through twelve and they didn't want to demolish it. And it needed um to be also abated. It had um plenty of asbestos and lead based paint. And so we wrote a cleanup grant for um the Creek County Museum. They hired a contractor, they abated it, they renovated it, and now it's a home to um. The museum in Sundance. And if you haven't been there, it's, you know, quite nice. Um, that's us, spur. Um, and our objectives are. When you boil it down to it, it's uh job creation of revenue uh through redevelopment, uh addressing Brownfields properties. And promoting redevelopment in public-private partnerships. Um, and some of the things that, that we hope to provide, uh removal of blight, uh local community revitalization. Um, utilizing existing infrastructure, which is important, you know, because infrastructure placement is super expensive. And if you can utilize at least a portion of what exists, then you do um head into the cost for redevelopment. And this is just like the arc of the redevelopment. It's launch your project, engage people, um, plan. Um, uh, you assess through phase one, uh phase two environmental site assessments. You re-envision and reinvigorate your team and keep the project going. So in a perfect world, that's what it looks like. A lot of times you might jump back and forth on that arc, but um, that's what we hope the, the path looks like. Um, and here's some of the things that, that we can do for our contractors, heirs and W W C specifically. So Christina's.
Yeah, so you can kind of pick from a variety of different things, or you can pick a menu of things depending on what your project requires. Um, you know, anything from assessing the environmental conditions of the property, just so you know what they are.
Right.
So you can say, okay, well now at least I know this isn't a regulatory thing. This is just a knowing thing. So you can say. I have this old downtown building. Now we know there's asbestos in it. It's gonna cost, you know, five thousand dollars to abate. We can handle that. Um, or you find out it's gonna be more than that to abate. You may need on the other end where you need to actually apply for additional funding. And then we can help you kind of look for that funding and figure out tax incentive, grant incentives, different things like that to make it more viable for your developers or your owners. Um, anything from cleanup for planning, um, loans and grants, um. Funding processes, how can we put the funding together? What, what grants do we need to stack in order to make this project work? What types of loans are available? What type of liability protections are available through, like if you run it through D E Q. They have liability protections. Once it's cleaned up, they, they have liability protection on that property. Um. Planning like code evaluation. We've done downtown corridor plans. We've done land use assessments. We've done um. You know, business parks, assessments of business parks, laying out different lots for people to figure out how to redevelop a, a business park. Evaluation of the infrastructure, uh.
The market viability and market studies, feasibility studies.
Yep, um, so we have economic development folks on our team that can actually run through and tell you exactly how much it's gonna cost to redevelop. What the abatement costs are gonna be and then what, what types of uh loans or grants we wanna, wanna have to.
Wanna pursue.
And then we also, one of the coolest things that I like is we have visualization.
Yeah.
People, so they can actually draw, see, they can walk in the room here with you. And you want to say, I want to figure out what we can do with this piece of property. Uh, we were just up in Gillette and we sat down with the whole city council around a table. And we had our sketch artists there and they sketched out what they wanted to stir downtown to look like after they're done. And so they were able to use that as part of their master planning and comprehensive planning. Um, we've done full corridor plans for downtowns in Hudson, um.
Right.
Um.
Even, even in very small towns, doesn't have to be, and most often isn't in, in a big city.
Yeah, we do something called the Revital Lab, which is um, is actually a down, is actually a charrette. We bring in experts depending on what you need. Uh, maybe an environmental, structural engineer, mechanical engineer, whatever you need. And we'll sit down around the table with, with their board and say. Here's the major issues with this and here's the big things that are gonna cause you not to be able to redevelop this. And we do that over a one, two day process. So that.
And we come back with a report.
With a report that you guys can then take out and say, this is, this is what we need to make this project work.
Yeah, to do all kinds of cool stuff. And this is, this is basically how, how it works. Um, there's not really an application. We don't act as a pass through. We don't. Give you a grant, you don't have to apply for a grant. So what we're doing right now is the expression of your interest. If you're interested. We'll put you on the list in the queue, which is pretty long right now. So you gotta be patient with us. Uh, before we can actually kick off anything. But you just tell us what your project is. We talk with you, figure out what you need. Uh, what you don't need, what your timing is, what your redevelopment is. Um, we have to have a, uh, an access agreement. With property owners, including towns and cities, just because we're, you know, we're, we're gonna be on private property and we need to have. Formal access that you say, yeah, it's okay if you come on.
It's literally one line. It says, give me access to your property. Yes, okay.
Uh, yeah, who you are, where the property is and like the timeframe. So it's not complicated.
But the really cool thing is no regulations, no cost match.
Nope.
Uh, nothing. You guys don't have to contract anybody. You just ask us to do where we're walking in.
Right, she's already contracted with us, so you don't have to worry about that part. Um, we uh complete a site eligibility, so that is something that I do. Uh, we are funded by EPA. That is our funder. Um, what we do with the site eligibility determination is provide it to them. They take a look at whether the site is eligible and what they're concerned about is um, the, for example, people that like. Make the mess. Are they applying to use, you know, this grant funding? And if they are, well, they're not eligible, but um, so far. Almost a hundred sites, we have not been turned down for eligibility, so.
So, so an example of when it would not be eligible, like the Sinclair refinery could not come in and ask D E Q to put. Grant funding towards the refinery.
Yeah.
The refinery is their deal. It's under, it's under, it's under circle.
They have their own.
They have their own mechanisms that are already.
Right, but we could clean up the um, the site in Laramie because it was no longer owned by. By a refinery, it wasn't owned by BP. It was owned by private parties and then the Conservation District. And so that made it eligible for us to go and do work there. Um, and uh, once approved, heirs and W W C are contractors. They submit a cost estimate depending on what you want. To do at your site or your project. Um, so I write a task order. We work with you to figure out. Timing and deliverables and all those kinds of things. And then um, we, we get started, so. I think we have some current um projects. We've got eighty-five sites initiated. Twenty communities, four different funding sources, um, different um assessment categories. Uh, economic development, planning, zoning, mechanical, electrical, structural, um. We've done a, uh, just a slew of presentations, including WAM and WEDA over the past couple of years. Um, uh, also um, redevelopment visualizations to different communities. Uh, so we're working at the Civic Center in Laramie.
Um, we've done a little bit of everything at Civic Center. They've asked us for anything and everything we can give them. I think.
They're an eye contact actually.
Yeah, they're a profit. So um, yeah, well, you can see a little bit of everything, very strategies. And we've actually already uh, a couple really cool things that have already happened. There's a new coffee shop that went in. Uh, we're helping, able to help them a little bit with their economic development planning for that. And then we've also been working with them and helping them with their electrical systems and their fire suppression systems, which were both in extremely bad shape.
Right, yeah. And so now they're, they're better informed and I think that they have some private donations as well.
They just, they just got private donations of plus a half a million for the heating system. So they will actually go to their donors and say, this is what.
This is what we need, this is what we have, this is what we call. And so it's good example of other things. Uh, and they have like this weird um underground swimming pool. They're on the, uh, which fascinate. We've never been used. Uh, that's the, the picture on the bottom right.
Yep.
And so, you know.
Creepy, yeah, it's creepy. If you come to Laramie, I'll take you down there. Just let me know.
Yeah.
It's creepy and there's like the little kids' trucks sitting there.
Yeah, yeah.
Really, really scary.
Where's this building at in Laramie?
Laramie, it's the oldest before in the state of Wyoming.
It's on Garfield.
Yeah, it's on Garfield, right across from the public library. We're the state engineers offices, SINT, Duncan, R B. It's all of your water facilities and all that come out of that office.
Yeah, yeah. Right, and they're um, and they're, uh, they have full occupancy at that building. They have like, I think seventy tenants and a lot of them are in the arts. Like textiles, uh, music, um, artists.
Um, they have government.
They have tractors.
Right, like radio stations.
Yeah, yeah. Businesses, I think maybe a couple. Come here too, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, a good example of, of an older building being repurposed, but still needs some assistance. Um, City of Laramie Maintenance Shop, um, over there on Fourth Street. Uh, they have, um, I think the old water shop, the. Parks and Rec, um, animal shelter, so we did some assessment um for them.
And they're actually in the process of bidding out, right, you know, for housing, for apartments.
Yeah, I think so. Thinking like W C D A grants too.
Yeah, yeah. And so all they asked for was environmental assessment, cleanup planning, and so we were able to get that done. And oddly enough, my dad told me, so my dad was old public works director, so you're like, there was an old. Dump or landfill out there.
Yeah.
Next to the ponds. And so we did an assessment. We actually didn't buy anything. This was pretty. It was out just a little bit of contamination and it's making covered with buildings and not, not a lot to do, so it's good.
Yeah, which was surprising.
Yeah, very surprising.
Um, this is another cool project. It's in Cheyenne. It's um, the former uh air terminal. Um, it's not very far from Lions Park. And it's, and it's very cool. They wanna redevelop it. Um, it's got one of the last parabolic roofs in the nation. It would be a shame to see that building go away. So uh, we've done environmental assessment, um, economic uh development planning. I think you guys helped them with their.
Yeah, so, so they wanted to tap into Six Penny for this. And so we were also working with City of Cheyenne to kind of help them get that set up. And get everything we needed so that all they have to do now is go in and go, their project and have everything ready.
So, very, very cool building. Um, and we're doing a lot of work in Rollins. Uh, so at the, uh, Golden West, it's, uh, AKA eight twenty-two Pine, uh, Pink Marcell, um.
Yeah.
You know, the street.
As you guys know, along that west side, there's multiple motels along there that we cleaned up. So we've done anything, we've done redevelopment plans and feasibility studies for those old motels. In addition to assessment for their asbestos, and we have a, a baitment plan ready to go. So that, um, so that the city of Rollins, Tom and Luke can just kind of step in and, and pay for what they wanna pay for and whatever they don't wanna pay for, they can look the owners now. So we can get those going off the, off, out of the way because they're kind of holding up development and other things.
Um, also in Rollins, the Strand Theater, the old Fox Theater. We did some work in there and also the Ferguson Building.
Yeah, Pam's, Pam actually was talking about this today with me. Um, I was at the energy conference this morning and Pam said that, so we did an abatement plan for them. They kind of know exactly what they need to do now. Um, Pam has money set aside for this building, and they wanna put apartments upstairs. So that should be really cool when they get it done. And, um, really excited. I think Pam's excited. She knows now exactly, so that as her volunteers go in, they know what to watch for, where the asbestos sits and where the lead base paint sits, so they're not.
Right, right. And, and we, we, we hope to. We plan to help them with the abate costs. So, because it's, um, it's, it's pretty important to provide, um, I guess options and alternatives for affordable housing. I mean, smaller towns in the town. There's just, um, uh, just not that much availability. And that was part of the, um, I think the economic thing was, was the feasibility and economics of putting in affordable housing or apartments.
Yeah. For you planners in the rim, attainable housing because we could not get it like low enough for what they consider now affordable housing in the city also.
Yeah. Um, the Sunrise Y M C A up by Hartville. Um, so we, we have done quite a bit. We did feasibility studies, structural integrity of the building, M E P, um, asbestos and lead based paint sampling there. Um, Albany County Fairgrounds.
Common issue across the states. Buildings are getting old. Townies can't keep up. So we've done a lot of work for them. But the, the fairgrounds is getting a new horse barn hopefully in the next few weeks. So next time you're in Laramie, you'll have to come check out the new horse barn. And then the grandstands are in extremely poor condition. And those will be coming down in the near future. And we got the asbestos all figured out and lead base paint. So those should be easy to come down and, and we have a donor that's gonna help.
Another guy. Um, yeah, I think that's, uh, I think that's the Masonic Lodge in.
In Lander.
In Lander. And that's an example of like the rendering sketches, um, that the landscape art architects could do, and provided the community. So just these people that like a, a visual, um, here's what, what it could look like.
Yeah, I think it'd be a flip to the next page, you know.
Yeah, it's like an overlay.
Yeah, an overlay picture as well.
Yeah. And of course, um, everybody's favorite, the Acme Power Plant. Um, a lot of, of work and planning has gone, has gone into that. Um, it just couldn't, I mean, it just can't stand. Um, it's, uh, what they call an attractive nuisance. Um, kids are in there, busy falling off the third floor and breaking hips and, um, there's, I mean, it's, it's a physical and an environmental hazard. So, um, but it's pretty close to being completely abated. Um, likely we'll see some demolition soon. And downtown planning in Hudson. Um, so it doesn't matter how small your community is. We can do some planning and some visualization. And now it's your turn.
Yeah, I forgot the other thing we can really help with too, which we've done a lot of, is that public outreach side of it as well. We're willing to bring a move in to your, um, festivals or just come to city council meeting or do a town hall. If there's a project you wanna just get feedback on and find out more about what the community would like to do with it.
Sure. And, and I don't think I have any, any pictures necessarily, but, um, so what we've done with people in Hannah and Hudson both is provide like big concept boards with different ideas and people just kind of like when they come to the building or whatever. And then they just like give it feedback, you know, we like this, we hate this, no dog parks, whatever, you know, uh, on those concept boards.
Then we could do it either electronic or we can do it, do it in person, by hand, if whatever people prefer. Yeah.
Cindy, if we were to pursue this opportunity with our, um, shop and our non-used water treatment facility over here on the side of town.
Yeah.
We could essentially kind of get an environmental, environmental done, assess the buildings and conditions and, get kind of like economic development, plan together an exit strategy out of there.
Likely, yeah. Yeah, we can do something to that effect. We can, um, I don't know if you wanna do Saratoga writ large, or just you wanna focus on the water treatment plant in that area?
That's our primary.
That's your focus.
Building that brought, that started this conversation.
Yeah, yeah. No, I definitely, and so I tell people it's better to know than to wonder. Um, you know, i- i- is it scary? Is it gonna fall into the river? What, you know, or is it in pretty good shape if, if it's sound? Or, you know, if the asbestos and lead paint are in good shape, then, you know, that you, you got time on your side. If, if it's not, then, you know, it's probably something you should at least know what you have on your hands. And then do like the economic development. Do you have, I mean, do you wanna demo it? You run out. What, what's?
Yeah, so right now we have an old, we've got an old water treatment plant building. Or this is old P D that's totally not being used. And then we have the old water treatment plant building that has, um, clearwell tanks underneath it.
Okay.
And then a pretty decrepit street shop all over here right next to the river. And most of that infrastructure is, it's worn out. It's old and we're not sure that, I mean, we don't need to be there. But we'd like to come up with a plan to remediate that, move us somewhere else and then, whatever the public input determines that space becomes, you know, sell it, let it, you go back into the private sector for development or whatever.
Yeah.
Um, that's kind of what has stimulated this, this conversation.
We're actually, actually in Basin right now. We're helping the town of Basin go through their public buildings and actually consolidate. So they have multiple buildings and they have some that are in pretty bad shape and just consolidate their operations so they're not spread out.
Right, into that, I think it's a former school.
Yeah, into the former school that was studied.
And, and, and they only have like two people in that entire building. Uh, but yet they've got like, um, other, uh, like the police department, maybe fire department. So they're scattered all over town. It just makes sense to do an evaluation. What does it take to bring everybody into this building? And so it might be just the opposite for, what you need is, you know, to, to find another location, vacate all of these buildings if you're still using them. And then what you do, what you do.
For a number of reasons, the shop and the water treatment plant, but we have more buildings that's totally, it's not.
Yeah, so if it's something you're interested in, like she said, we'll have to get the site eligibility determined. That's the first step. And then once that's done, then we can start forward with the next steps and.
Yeah, and we would wanna talk with, with you, with council and, you know, with, with your folks, with the community if you want. And figure out what, what ideas maybe you might have that. Cause it's what you need and what your ideas are, it's not what. What we want.
We can, we can run all the data and all the programs to tell you guys.
Right.
How many.
It makes sense, I guess.
Yes, you, you know, I guess everybody, my, my economic development guy says, every program tells you you need another women's clothing store. He said, seriously, how many women's clothing stores do we need downtown? So, yeah, so, right.
Lady, have a question.
Um, one thing I just wanted to emphasize in the level what you guys are saying is that, the D Q got, correct me if I'm wrong, got a grant of six years of funding upon this spur program, right?
So, so it's actually five years.
Okay, five.
Five years. And then we've got several other grants.
Okay.
And we're good on the grant front for a couple of years, you know, it's kind of touch and go.
So basically, if we are ever going to do anything with that water treatment that area, we would have to do an environmental study and then we'd have to do some sort of planning and visualization. And you'd have to pay, we'd have to pay for that before that property moved or anything. If we are able to take advantage of the spur program, all of that stuff is paid for through this program. And you guys have funding for at least three more years. Is that correct?
So it depends on how fast we burn through it, but, um, yeah, it's good for a couple of years.
As a town can take advantage of just this initial, visualization and planning and environmental study phase of it, then we don't as a town have to pay for it. And once we get those results, there's not a timeline on that the town has to act on it.
No.
It would just give us knowledge as to what do those, what does that, those buildings contain? What does the ground contain? So get some sort of environmental in, or environmental study.
Right.
And then if we can utilize any of these other resources that these guys can provide us, like visualization, planning, feasibility studies, those are other things that we would have to pay for in the future. But if we can utilize this spur grant, then it's just more tools at our disposal for free until the money runs out, right?
And, and there's, there's no commitment. If you don't, if the project doesn't pencil out, I mean, and sometimes they don't. And. Yeah, exactly. Maybe you drag it out and use it later or something. So there's.
Question?
Yeah.
If, okay, you come in and it's an environmental hazard, we decided, you know, is there an exit strategy that, that grants available to help us move and demolish us?
Okay, so that would be part of what, what we can provide. Um, so you're gonna have to address the asbestos if it's in there. Whether you demolish it or keep it or whatever, it's gotta be done. So, so at least this will provide that knowledge that you don't have to pay for later. So, um, as far as demolition, um, I know it's, um, possible to, to, um, uh, apply for a, a C D B G grant through W C D A for demo. Um, I believe Fermaop is doing that and maybe Laramie might be pursuing that.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Fighters provides like grant finding help, right? That's one of.
That, that'll be one of those, the components.
So we can give you, we can basically give you, uh, an idea of what you'll need to do. And then there's different things that you can use to actually pay for it. And our economic development team, because Wyoming doesn't have the grants available, that some of the other states do. Some of the other states we work in have massive demo grants and redevelopment grants. Wyoming doesn't have that. But we have other tools we can use. We can have ta, we have tax incentive tools. We have, um, you know, urban renewal tools, and T I F tools and all these other tools we can use to kind of, kind of help incentivize, you know, if we wanna, if you guys wanted to sell the property and say, we're gonna sell this and here's, here's, here are developers, what we know about this property. Now take it and, and now you have all the tools to do it. Here's all the tools that the city's gonna provide you to, to be able to redevelop this. We can do that. We can also provide you even with, um, there's some communities that instead wanna take out like a U S D A.
Do you like loans and grants?
Yeah, a U S D A loan or a U S D A grant to turn it around. So it just kind of depends on, on what the city is comfortable with.
Right.
Um, and, and we just try to work with you guys to, to put that strategy together.
Put that forward. And so once upon a time, I would have recommended if you do have, um, you know, like a lot of asbestos in your water plant or these other buildings, apply for an EPA cleanup grant because they, um, right now, they're, you know, they're, they're pretty big and they don't have a match. But really have no idea what to say, whether the grant cycle comes around this fall, whether they'll be available or not. But they, but they have been up until.
But they'll go up to like two million?
Yeah, with no, with no match right now.
Yeah, so those are pretty. Those are an option. Um, Rollins has a EPA assessment grant right now, uh, that they're using and, they wanna apply for a cleanup grant on properties. So they, they can't, you know, those could be two hundred thousand, million.
Right. Yeah, so that's, so that's a good way to clean up asbestos.
But there's.
If you have all of this stuff and it, it'll help. If you have these reports, when you go to apply those grants, if they're available, then you'll, you'll be able to write a better grant because you'll have all of the information. So.
Okay.
Yep. So, that's what we got.
Any additional questions?
Hmm.
Emery? Call?
So I'd say like next step would be, should you as a council say, yeah, let's, let's see what we've got going on in that space.
It's a site eligibility first.
Yeah, so you would just, you, you would, what, what would the town have to do?
Well, they've got a list right here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So basically, you know, just let Cindy know if you guys wanna be like, show, write an S E D out. That's the way I am and see what they.
Right.
And I need the, the parcel IDs or the, the legal address and, um, who's the legal owner, whether it be, you know, town of, of Saratoga or, or I don't know, somebody else might owe them. And, and then I don't write a novel. When I submit these things, it's pretty basic. And, um, usually I'm gonna turn around in a couple of weeks. And then we just get started if you're interested. And that usually starts with conversation. You know, give us more details. Um, well, you know, let's get a little, um, asbestos guys and let guys come out and take a look. So we need access. So. And if there are any other projects within the city that you want to also take care of, I would go ahead and get those addresses and have her start, getting that eligibility, even if you guys decide not to go forward with them.
Yeah.
Once you have the eligibility, then you guys could call Cindy at any time and say.
Yeah.
Say, if you still have money, can you guys do?
Right. I've got a handful, uh, of, of these S E Ds that, that I did for people and they, they backed out or they decided they were gonna go that direction. So.
Just in case, then you get the free money if you want it.
What's, what's your timeline right now? How far out do you think you are?
We're probably, before we can have somebody on site to do the asbestos, we're probably a couple of months, I would imagine.
Yeah, and that's mostly because of contractors right now. Our, our drillers and our, um, and we do have abatement guys on the team. The, or assessment guys, asbestos guys on the team that can just get out here.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, we just have such a queue right now, projects.
Yeah, a list as long as my arm. So it's gonna be a while.
Um, the economic stuff, um. Economic stuff can move a little bit faster, depending, you know, if you wanted to start like drawings and economic breakaway. That can go faster. Public outreach, if you need something like that, that can go a little faster. Plus, we like to tie it with any type of, events you have going on in the community because it's easier to get more.
Yeah.
If people are already coming out.
Yeah, wherever the people are, we're gonna ask them to come to where we are. So we just.
So, so those are a little bit faster just because of necessity. Um, because we were hitting the summer months when we guys have lots of events coming up. And they have concerts and all kinds of things that we always push over here. So.
But all that's prior to this, uh, you get the eligibility.
Uh, that, that can be done without the eligibility.
Yeah, no, all the economic stuff doesn't need the eligibility. Um, it's just for like the assessment stuff.
Any environmental.
But all the planning stuff. Let's start whenever, whenever heirs and W W C have. Basically. Yep. So you guys, think about it. And, uh, whenever you're ready, just, um, give us a call. We'll get you in the queue.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for the information.
Yeah.
Very nice presentation.
You guys.
Oh, yeah, of course. Yeah. We like to do that. Not, not when it's snowing, but.
Very well.
All right, thank you.
Uh, my question to the council is, do we wanna move forward with this a little bit? And maybe contact them and see where we, at least where we stand?
I'd say move forward.
Definitely.
I'd say so.
We'll have that in a form of a motion.
I'd make a motion to move ahead. Finding with this.
With the, at least these, you know, we'll talk to you about it and go over the agreement.
Talk about it. And you let me know who you want to be the point of contact, whether it should be you there, Emery, or others.
It's gonna be Emery. I was gonna, I was gonna ask for that in motion.
That can get you all the people information.
Yeah, I agree.
So. Well. Let me clarify the motion. I have a motion on the floor to go ahead and move forward with this, uh, first part of this brownfield assessment. I would like to add that Emery be our point of contact and he can work through somebody with the planning commission if he would, so chooses. And.
That.
You, you agree to that to the motion?
Yes, that's, that, that's how I would put the motion.
Okay. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
One more thing, Emery.
Well, I think we, I think with the help from a few people on the planning commission, it'll go pretty spick.
Yeah.
McCall.
I'm happy to help them. All right, we're being tested.
All right. Well, thank you again, lady. All right, well, thank you again, lady. Okay. Okay, we'll move on from that. We'll move on to the Carbon County two fifty donation. And we have down at five hundred dollars. I have spoke briefly with Karina. She said we can't afford. Do you remember when Candy Moulton was here, she asked for a thousand dollars? Karina says we can go forward with that amount out of this budget if the council so chooses. Jen just has five hundred dollars wrote down. Uh.
But it can be a thousand.
She says we can afford it. This'll be a one-time donation. And it's just for the centennial.
Yeah.
Donation. What's it, the grant attached to it that may be able to help us out?
No.
If the council's in favor of that, I'd take a motion to go ahead and approve a thousand dollars to the Carbon two fifty.
I'd make the motion to approve the thousand dollar donation to the Carbon two fifty.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We'll move on with, uh, resolution. Uh, this hazard mitigation plan that Lenny Lehman, uh, Carbon County Emergency Manager. And Jen and I had put together, it's for floods, mainly for flood down here, but it's for all emergencies. Jim, would you read that resolution, please?
Resolution, resolution number twenty, two thousand twenty-five dash two, a resolution, resolution of the town of Saratoga adopting the Wyoming Region Three Hazard Mitigation Plan. Twenty twenty-five update of this jurisdiction's multi-hazard mitigation plan. Whereas town of Saratoga with the assistance from the Wyoming Office of Homeland Security. Has gathered information and prepared the Wyoming Region Three Hazard Mitigation Plan twenty twenty-five update and. Whereas the Wyoming Region Three Hazard Mitigation Plan twenty twenty-five update has been prepared in accordance with FEMA. Requirements at forty-four C F R. Two oh one point six and whereas the town of Saratoga is a local unit of government that has afforded. The citizens an opportunity to comment and provide input in the plan and the actions in the plan and. Whereas the town of Saratoga Hazard Mitigation Plan and affirms that the plan will be updated no less than every five years. Now therefore be resolved by the town of Saratoga, the town of Saratoga, the Wyoming Region Three Hazard Mitigation Plan from twenty-five update. As this threatens jurisdictions multi-hazard mitigation plan and resolves to execute the action in this plan.
Questions? Uh, according to what I learned from Lenny, just about everybody that was involved with this in this town and also in Albany County. Pretty much is everybody's on board, so. Do I have a motion to go ahead and for me to sign this resolution for the hazard mitigation?
I'd make a motion to sign this resolution.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, we'll move on. Next item is the liquor license that we just held the public hearing on. Uh. This, it's kind of a transfer. And it'll be not a full-blown retail liquor license. Uh. We talked with the police chief. He has no issues with it. He had no issues when there was a retail license at the malt. Are there any addition questions, concerns? I would entertain a motion to go ahead and approve this liquor license to Hen and Harvest Danny's Grill.
I'd make the motion to approve the liquor license for Hen and Harvest restaurant.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey. Hey, we'll move on to the report from the police department.
All right, Mr. Mayor, Council. Um, last three weeks have actually been pretty busy for us. We've had two hundred and twenty-eight law calls. Um, some things have picked up. We actually had four dog bites in the last few weeks. Uh, two DUI arrests, several traffic stops and ten citations have been issued. Um. People in town and definitely getting busier. 'Tis the season. So my item for tonight that I have on the agenda. Is looking to get, uh, new patrol rifles. Councilman Barker, you're actually the only one I haven't spoken to personally about this yet. I didn't find you last week in my travels. But what we're looking at getting is changing from our, um, two-two-three slash five-five-six that we have. Um, that are government surplus M sixteen A ones left over from Vietnam War. We're looking at actually switching over to a three hundred blackout cartridge. Using subsonic rounds, which would actually give us. Um, the ability to, if we have to shoot a mountain lion or a bear as where the two-two-three. Doesn't really do that too well. It's a little too high speed and. As we found with the last one, we had to put down to quite a few rounds. So what we'd be looking at did these for. Um, the six rifles. And these would be suppressed also. Um, with six rifles, six suppressors. And this one, first one has the six slings for them also. It comes to ten thousand twenty-six dollars. So the rifles are one thousand two hundred and forty-nine apiece and the suppressors are three sixty-five apiece. And also included in these quotes is, um, optics and optic mounts. And we also have, uh, three hundred blackout magazines. So the total we're looking to do is thirteen thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars on sixteen cents. I do have this money left over in my, um, budget. It would be coming out of my capital equipment, which I still have a little over fifteen thousand left. I was gonna budget for these out of next budget year, but with the remaining balance, we decided to try to just. Get them purchased this year. That way we don't have to worry about the twenty thousand I had lined out for the budget next year.
I had him do, he brought this proposal to Mike and I, uh, and I had John. Tried to reach out, evidently he didn't get with you, Bob. Uh, but he reached out to the other council members, so I'll open it up for discussion.
I think it's a good idea. I think we need them. Town appliance or, uh, application and everything, I think they're better than a two-twenty-three or five-point-five-six.
I agree. Bob?
What's the typical caliber that most municipal police departments are using? Is it three hundred?
No, most municipalities are using a two-two-three. Um, many have switched over to the three hundred as well as some other game and fish agencies. But most municipalities don't have some of the animals that we do.
Right.
And I didn't wanna go to, most are either two-two-three or a three oh eight. But I didn't wanna go to the three oh eight just because of then we could possibly be worrying about carrying two different rifles. Or over penetrating and have to worry about what's a mile or two down the road.
And that would be my, that would be my only concern is. You know, the over penetration.
Right, and that's why I found, I was really, did a lot of research and found a three hundred blackout. Does not have even, um, a lot of the penetration that you'll get with going through drywall and walls that you even run into with nine millimeters, much less the two-two-three.
Yeah.
That has a lot of thump, but not huge penetration.
Yeah.
You know, it is.
Well, you can probably mitigate that depending upon what type of rounds they are too, can you not?
Correct, that's why I'm going with it. It'd be a heavier bullet, less powder in the subsonic. Setup rather than the full supersonic setup the most rounds are. These would be a slower velocity round also.
No. I don't have a problem with it.
Well. He had it in his. He has the money left over, which is something we wouldn't have to budget for, so. Nobody has a problem with it. I would entertain a motion to go ahead and purchase these rifles and supplies for thirteen thousand. Three hundred ninety-three dollars and sixteen cents.
I'll make the motion to go ahead and purchase these rifles for thirteen thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars and sixteen cents.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any additional discussion?
I apologize, I was out of the room one night. Why were we buying rifle and?
We're upgrading our police department.
Okay.
It's not a long-range rifle. That's the beauty of it. It has a lot of thump, but it's not a long-range rifle. They're great for towns. Where you could get. Where you could have over penetration and everything. There's a lot of police agencies using them now, a lot of, uh.
I, I don't mean to be negative, but. Pumpses I believe are armed with Glocks. That's a thirteen-round loaded in the morning and shoot all day kind of gun. What do you need a rifle for?
That would be because of a nine-millimeter pistol or not hit down a mountain lion or a bear.
Not only that, but.
A pistol is a short-range weapon also. You need something you can hold at your shoulder. To get a little more range. If somebody's over at the wolf there shooting at you, I'd way rather have a rifle than a pistol.
Hey.
Myself.
A bit of this, didn't we have a whole bunch of, some, several AR fifteens or something before this?
No, we had some, we've got some AM sixteen. They're issued from the Vietnam War. They're federal, they're federally owned. They're given to us. That's what we're trying to back away from. A little bit is over penetration because a two-two-three will probably shoot through most any wall in this town. And we don't want that.
Okay.
Because we have to be accountable. Correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but we're, we're accountable for anything that leaves that barrel.
Correct, every, every round that we send downrange, we are liable for.
So.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome. And the only other rifles that we actually owned as the town is a nine-millimeter Ruger carbine, which would not be effective on the animals either.
So it's the animals you're concerned about, the bear, and, and we do have bears and lions. If you, if you comes to that.
Correct.
I understand.
I think it's a combination of everything. Hopefully we'll never have to use them. Same with a sidearm, but, you know, you never know. And if we're gonna have a police department, I just assume I'll be. One thing about being uniformed too. Is somebody doesn't have a nine-millimeter carbine in his car and the other guy's got a two-two-three in his car.
It's got the bullets.
Yeah, there, there you go. So. It saves all the way around. It's actually money efficient because, you know, we only buy two. Two forms of ammunition now after this, so that's, that's just my opinion on it.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. And they order your rifles, chief.
All right, thank you. Uh, that is all I have for tonight unless anyone has any questions.
Us. All right, thanks, sir. Okay, we'll move on to the fire department. Uh, I spoke with Kylie briefly. She had the contract that the fire district redone. She'd be redoing it right now. Uh. We're still kinda up in the air, so she said she would, uh. Have it forward by the end of the week on whether we need make changes. Her recommendation and, so. Uh, that's the only thing I have to report on the fire department. Okay, we'll move on to the recreation department.
Anything, Ellen? Um, a couple of things I have. So first is. I'm gonna hire a new swim instructor. Her name is Jacoby Mirich. She is a P E teacher out in Rollins. And she spends most of her summers here. So if we had talked about it and agreed, basically we'd pay her twenty bucks an hour to make sure that we. They'll have some lessons this year.
That was how much?
Twenty dollars an hour.
Okay. My understanding, this lady, uh, was on a swim team in her high school year. She was a certified instructor at one time to teach swim lessons, so hopefully. She'll get through the class with ease. Um.
I think she will.
That's what I know about her. So do I have a motion to go ahead and hire Jacoby Mirich as a swim instructor for twenty dollars an hour?
I would make the motion to hire Jacoby Mirich at twenty dollars an hour for swim instructor.
Hmm, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Hey, my next one I have is, uh, Jill Leisha Hady. And she will be a cashier at the pool this summer and it will be at the new rate of thirteen dollars per hour.
Hmm, how many cashiers do you have now?
She'll be the third.
And with her, you'd have enough to cover everybody's shifts and all that stuff?
I believe so.
Through the summer?
Yes.
Question? Do I have a motion to go ahead and hire this young lady as a cashier at thirteen dollars an hour?
I'd make the motion to hire Jill Leisha Hady as a cashier.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you. Um, I do have some updates for you, um, at the pool at least. The tile has been fully replaced. We got the first coat of blue, blue paint on. Pool. Um, and I wanna extend my gratitude to Emery, his guys for helping out. They've really done a lot of. Work over there. Pretty invaluable.
Okay, it's, that sounds like it was a heck of a lot of work, I mean.
Yeah, and there's still some to be done, but we're on the downhill slide for sure.
Good job. Thank you for doing.
Yeah, definitely. You guys did a really good job there.
Thank you. Um, then I also have an update. Um, youth basketball just finished. Uh, went pretty well. We did send out a survey today. And then in regards to youth soccer, we'll not be having youth soccer this year. Uh, we had ten or eleven kids sign up, many different ages, from late teens, you know, all the above. I did reach out to all those parents and I offered them the facility, offered them the equipment. See if somebody could, if a few of them would be willing to volunteer. None of them formulated a response to me regarding wanting to do that. Um, and last night at our rec meeting, we have decided. That we are gonna move the soccer season next year to July and August. To hopefully get us around Little League, because Little League ends in June. Maybe we'll have a better turnout.
Good idea.
Yeah.
You're gonna wait till next year?
Yeah.
You're not gonna try to do it this year?
Yeah, we decided to wait till next year. Any other questions for?
Miss McCall has.
McCall. Has anything happened with the. Peace agreement with the town and the Aquatics Center? I know that was discussed a couple rec meetings ago and. I think we've been, uh, asked the town for what they had come up with a couple of years ago. I'm just curious if there was any follow-up on.
I know nothing about it.
Nobody has approached us, or not me anyway, how about any of you guys? You know, it's what, it was brought up.
Two months ago, that we talked with Rush Creek from at the rec.
Oh, you're talking about the new.
The new Aquatics Center, yeah, and we were gonna look into, I think, maybe. Of we were gonna reach out and figure out.
Last, last I knew, last I knew Rush Creek was still putting together. Where they had meetings or they, they were gonna have meetings and bring it up to their board to see. You know, what they may be able to bring to the table for it. That's the last we've heard. Um, nothing was discussed, nothing was discussed at. The last couple rec board meetings.
Me as it's, I'll move forward.
No, I'd say not. That'd be my opinion, cuz. Who knows if they're gonna come up with the money to get it started or not? We've given them a lease.
Then it doesn't, it doesn't, I think there's like that.
There was already a lease agreement in place from a couple of councils ago. And we did get a copy of that, or not an agreement, but it was a. Right.
No, though, my understanding where we left at the last was.
No, though, my understanding where we left at the last was, and Nick asked this when we brought this up two or three councils ago. There, that it's difficult to get people. To commit to. Monies or support, financial support, when the town doesn't have investment in. What we're doing, right? So, that contract. At that meeting. Bob or somebody Chuck said, we're gonna take it back to Kylie and, and make sure that she's looked it over and we'll revisit it, because. There's, if we don't have a place, you already have the contract in hand. If we don't have a place to build it. People are less money to get, less willing to give money, that's the point, so. Brush Creek, it would hold more water if we actually have an identified location. So. That I, my understanding from that last meeting. Where Nick was there, where we, we talked about in general what's been discussed over time. We still need an okay, and part of the contract is, if nothing happens after so mu- a period of time, then it's nullified. So this is just so that we have a place to commit to build. And then, if, if we don't raise the money, then it dissolves the contract. So what I recall, and we can look at historical information there and many, meeting minutes. But I remember us approving, go ahead. With the previous council, and when it was brought to this council, it was tabled, or it was. They said, we, we need to look at it further. But there was no town agreement. Made. So do we need to get that contract back into Kylie's hands?
You know, I, I don't remember a contract ever coming to me ever, I don't remember ever seeing the contract that was discussed.
Yeah, I thought after that rec meeting, we talked about it in, um, council.
Yeah.
I thought somebody was going to dig it back up so that it could be re-reviewed. And potentially sign. And I don't, and that was, it was two months ago or something, I don't.
And I can't say for sure, but I don't remember any in the council, I remember it being discussed, McCall. And because Bob shared a lot of information on it.
Yeah, and you guys were both here, and you, you spoke on that as well.
I was, yeah, I was just curious if there was any follow up on that.
If somebody would bring me the contract, I, I will definitely have Kylie look it over.
I have an email here from Nick Hatterley on February fifth, twenty twenty five. Um. Looks like it was sent to Megan. Patrick Donahue, Casey Jones, Sarah Watch, Joe Elder, me, and you, it was, you were carbon copied in this email as well.
From Megan?
Yeah, no, from Nick. Um. And it was stuff that had been discussed. Clear back in twenty twenty two. So that's kind of where it got left.
Can you? What's your email address for me?
C L Davis.
Okay.
Eleven oh four.
That actually makes sense, because we went to the first one. February third was the first Monday in February, so that we went to the rec. Commission meeting.
Hmm.
It was, you know, it was asked to share more information, so he forwarded all the information over to the rec commission to do further investigation and. See what we need to do next.
Hmm.
And he just made the statement that it would. It would mean a lot, saying, though it's not a, a. It's a little supporting, but it, it's a, a show of good faith by the town that this is a project of the town supports. So that when he is fundraising or talking to. Or the creek, whoever says, yes, the town wants us, we already have a lease signed. At this location, this is the lease sign, and if it doesn't ever happen, the town not out anything, right, because if the money is never raised. The lease is nullified, I think there was a.
What's the deal? Two five, twenty five. And you don't force.
I'm not showing that I got it. But. That's neither here nor there, uh. Yeah, if I can get a copy of that contract. Maybe you can look it up on your email and resend it to me. I will look it over, and if the council so chooses, we can send it off to Kylie. Uh, I don't have a problem with that, having her review it. But. As far as signing it. I mean, I think the town could admit to letting them have the property, but. I don't know if we want to sign it until something's definite.
I remember.
I could go under her advice on that.
I remember the previous council when this was discussed, and Ron Hutchins had kind of the same concerns that I do, he, he said something about. Well, if we give them a, a lease and. They dig a mud hole there, and. Call it good or something, you know, I have enough money to do that. You remember that, I was at a meeting when he said.
Start digging a hole until they have.
Yeah.
The money committed.
Well, that's what the, that's what the concern is, that. That. On the long term.
And Nick said that it would mean a lot. Having something tangible from the town supporting this project. Because right now, or he had felt last few times he come to town council. Not necessarily you all, but the previous council were like, yeah, raise the money, come back to us then, instead of being. More proactive of like, what can we do to help? The thing that he said he can do to help at this stage. Is, is follow through with the lease agreement, so that we can say, the rec, the Aquatics Center can say. That this is where we want to do it, the town has agreed to lease this, this property, so it's, it's more of a show of good faith, the town is. Is more of a, an active supporter in, in this project. And that's all, sorry, second word of mouth through Nick, that, that he said at, at the rec committee, or rec, or the rec meetings that he was at. In February.
Anyway. I don't have any paperwork I can send off. So, and I don't, I got three emails that.
I just, I just forwarded it, yep.
So, well, after. Let's read through it, review it, and go from there. I want to read the contract, I've never read it.
I would, yeah, sorry, I was just curious if there was any follow up on.
Uh, I would, I will say, no, there has not been any follow up, McCall. I don't mean that derogatory, but. There have not been any follow up, so we'll look into it and see where it goes from here. Uh-huh, thank you, anything else for Carter? Okay, we'll move on to the Department of Public Works, Mr. Penner. Heavy on the mist.
Evening, councilor, I'll try to be kind of short winded. Um, number sixteen, so last year, it's been a while, we put some funding in the budget to. Um, do kind of some wildlife, maybe store artwork down at the hobo pool on the swimming side of the swimming pool building. Um, I hit you, but actually, kind of had Kathy had brought this up in passing. If you walk by the pool building, you don't even see the full building, because it's right next to you. So. Those locations are probably not really very desirable. There was, um, in the stamp plan. Next to the outhouse gift shop, there's the wall on the White House Bridge right there, that was identified as a possible place to do. Um, kind of some wildlife work. This is the same guy who had approached last year, um, and he's come up with that design, that's a packet. On there, why don't let us do that through landscape permit is what they run those under. Um, he's done, and has done several artworks throughout the state of Wyoming. Um, I would, actually, you know, I would like to get this done, maybe we could before the fourth of July, uh, early summer. The total cost of that. Was fifteen bucks per square foot, so it's about three thousand dollars plus or minus fifteen percent. Um, depending on, you know, the actual amount of paint it takes to paint on the concrete, you won't quite know that until he starts. I think it's, uh, pretty indicative of kind of the river activity that goes on down there. But it's, it's up to you guys.
Do you think if we approved it tonight, they could get it done?
Yeah, I think he acts like he could get it done in May, or either it's just it towards the end of May, or if you got a second.
Hmm.
We can, you, he had one big project.
Is that gonna go out of that? Are you gonna take that out of that little bit of Bridge Street money that's still there?
No, we could take it out of there, but we did have some capital improvement money in the parks and, and stuff that we had placed aside for.
I really liked the picture.
I did ask him what would happen if it gets, he'd have the paint, he can come back and just paint over with it, paint it. I did, I have some concerns with that, but he's had to deal with that before he can deal with it.
And, and we. I would add that I'm willing to work on. Working, like writing up a grant with Discover Carbon County to see if there's some reburt, reimbursable funds available, if we. Put a placard like sponsored by or something to that effect. But we would need to get prior approval from the council to pursue those funds, if you'd like.
So what's the council thing?
Yes, I think move ahead with it. Be fine.
I'll take a motion.
I'd make a motion to move ahead with. The art.
The mural.
Yeah, the mural, I guess, yeah.
I would second to that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen, um, number seventeen, I had, two meetings ago, we talked about, um, installing some curb and a little bit of sidewalk and, and. The only ending that western boundary over there at Never Forget Park. I reached out to the guys who did the last curb, and he come in about right at what I thought he would. This is. A smoker, he's trice, and he's fast, I'd like to get him on the books. If we can, we probably shoot for that first part of June, it's kind of what I told him, we'll do all the dirt work. I figured to come in about twenty seven, twenty eight, and it's a little bit under that. It's quite a bit of work for that price.
Uh. Yeah, I, my feeling is that we move forward with Never Forget Park, they have the money. So, my feeling is that we move forward with this curb.
Yeah.
More getting this done and getting it, basically out of our. The town being done with it. That's my opinion.
Mine as well, I'd make a motion to. Move ahead and get this guy.
Have this curb quota twenty six thousand two hundred and eighty four dollars?
Yeah.
I would second to that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Um, we did take delivery on the, um, Ford that we ordered for the water and sewer department as the utility truck that came without a bed. Um, we had some thicker things we wanted to get on the bed. For our uses from the ladder racks, ready that slide out the back, lights in the, um, inside the boxes. He looked around at a few, um. Benders, and we, uh, Abel was able to provide everything we wanted in that box. And we figured we'd be spending around twenty five on that box, so with everything and all the. I guess you call them goodies added on there, and then them rewiring the sensors and stuff that comes in, twenty two, six, five, these are our caspers. I, I do, I would like to move forward with this, and it serves the guys for what they need that truck for, what they need to be able to do with it. I, I mean, if it's, these beds are one, I mean, it's just, the prices go from nothing to. You know, you can spend eighty thousand dollars on one of these boxes, so this.
Was this a cabin chassis truck?
Yeah. We will have a bed. Oh, you mean to come with just a cabinet frame, no, it had a bed on it.
So what are they doing with the old bed?
If we could put an R and P, we could sell it.
That's what I would.
I mean, yeah, we'll get it back, we're not.
Is it an aluminum truck or steel truck?
I believe it's aluminum.
So those beds are worth some money.
Right, yeah.
So that might be some way to, what I'm saying is, that might be a way to recoup.
Some of that cost, for sure.
Cost.
And my plan right now is, once we get that back and we, and, and we're using it, is probably, I mean, we could put the bed up and the old utility truck up. And do kind of like what we did with the other stuff. Unload them. We don't worry about using that back. Only thing, I mean, if we were in a, in the process of trading stuff in like every two years, you know, we could hold on to the bed and then put the bed.
Is it a single tire or do we?
Single.
Eight foot?
Yep.
You're the car guy, what do you think?
It looks good to me, um. And realistically. Like, if I had somebody come in that ruined one of them beds, because aluminum's really hard to deal with. So typically, you just replace the whole bed. Um, if it was damaged very bad. That bed from Ford. Would cost. Six, seven thousand dollars to buy. So I, I think realistically, used, uh, takeoff beds aren't worth as much as, you know, like that, but realistically, you could probably get. Five hundred to a thousand out of that bed with the tailgate.
Oh, I think so, pretty.
Resale.
Yeah, that's pretty.
So, uh, looking through their quote and everything, and obviously, all this stuff has gone up significantly in the last three years. That actually seems pretty good. Okay, from what I'm seeing.
Yeah, there were things on there that. I was surprised how much less they were, and then things, we're surprised at how much more they were. But that's, I mean, the nature of, you buy anything right now, so.
Yeah.
You want to put that in the form of a motion?
I would make the motion to. Uh, outfit this truck for the amount of twenty two thousand six hundred and fifty seven dollars.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
Um, just a couple of quick things on the public works side before we move on. On the lift station, we got the power cord ran, um, to the lift station, that thing probably be live sometime in the middle of next week, and then we'll get everything. Start getting that final cleanup done at the airport and getting things seated. We're gonna start, um, hopefully tomorrow morning is kind of the plan to get a heavier aggressive cleanup started on First Street and get the sidewalks and the road cleaned up and. And do some street washing and stuff. And then we'll move on to Bridge Street from there. Uh, we demoed the salt shed over here at the, at the shop, the only thing we have left to move out of that right away is that green building, and then we can move the fence and we'll be. Out of the street, so to speak.
Is that on skids? That green building?
Yeah, well, it's a kind of a Morton Building type design, so it's got a aluminum frame on the bottom. Kind of, we've got a plan on moving it, we're just kind of. Moves across the yard, I'd like to put it on a slab and, and bolt it down, so we're gonna maybe start parking a jet rotor in there. Be one more thing we could get out of our shop, but. Hopefully, we'll be out of it right away by the end of March first weekend, June. And we did, uh, get the V A, or the B W, B F W donated some, um, flags, American flags to us, we did outfit those to where we can hang them up on the light poles on Memorial Day, we will have. Flags on Bridge Street.
Cool. Yeah.
Now, we've got a, uh, easement. Kind of update I'm working on with Kylie for a property over here up at Fourth Street, so hopefully we'll have something on that at the next meeting for you guys to go through. Just to fill out a few smaller items on, yeah, on the weed pest, um, we're getting the foggers calibrated tomorrow, we've got two adult aside aerial applications and two of adult aside, or two larva side aerial applications on the books right now for this season. Still planning on fogging three days a week. And we are looking for some weed pest employees, if anybody's. Interested in that.
Are you still looking at changing your times on that a little bit?
I don't know. I'd like to, but I think it's gonna be more effective. And continue doing it on the evening. Like, you know, stabbing wise, it'd be a little bit easier in the rain, but I think it would be more effective. And we are gonna try and improve the trapping program this year, so we need to start trying to get a little bit more data. As, to see how effective we actually, you know, are being, I know people like to see us out and see us change and run and stuff, but there. Might be some nice words, and it's not effective. Yeah, if we had a little bit more better trapping data, I think that would be able to. Uh, show us that a little bit better. Any public works questions?
Hmm hmm, no.
No.
As your local hippie owner.
As your local hippie bee owner?
Yes.
The bees go in there, yeah, high when it gets dark and then you spray after dark, then the bees don't die.
I know.
Opposed to doing it in the morning?
I.
Throw that out.
I'm aware we can, we considered your, the pollinators, but.
Thank you.
Yes.
Spray them.
I'm allergic to bees. Terminate their contracts.
Um, I guess so. Moving on to the planning commission. So we did, I just want to say something about this night, number nineteen. I know this was a, uh, kind of a frustrating experience for everybody involved. Us, the applicant, uh, twice the things I could have done better to make that process go better. I apologize for that, but at the end of, you know, at the end of the day, we have multiple people and multiple votes to get us through these processes, so. It's just one of those things we have to deal with and we get a vote the way we want to vote. Go with the decisions we live with. Or we make. So anyway, we did send it back at, at the council's request and have them review it very illicitly to the criteria. We even voted everybody's opinion through each criteria and, um, planning commission did find it. Did only meet four out of the eight required, um, criteria for the approval. So they did make a recommendation to. Uh, approve that variance, um, after everything was reviewed. Do you guys make the final decision on them? I did put that, all their votes in there on that, um, application in front of you.
So what's the council so choose to do?
So we're safe with planning commission's, uh, recommendation.
A form of a motion?
I'll make that motion.
To go ahead and not approve this variance?
Yes.
You have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Public comment?
Okay.
Do I need to?
I would prefer you did, so they can see who's talking.
Did any of you council people go and look at the property?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I went and looked after the last council. I'll admit it, I'm not a great fan of, for this very reason that's going on right here. Correct me if I'm wrong. You're wanting to move, it's the, probably the legal side of the building, but it's the side of the building. It's a driveway and a sidewalk right up to the building. They want to put a pitch roof with a couple of posts in the ground. Do I understand that to be correct?
Uh.
Over their door?
Essentially, yeah.
Okay. When you stand at the bank, you can't even see the building because of all the vegetation, the trees and the bushes. When they aren't even leafed out, let alone when they're leafed out. No one will see that because that street doesn't go anywhere. You don't drive down there. You turn into the motel parking lot. There is absolutely in my, as a citizen, there is absolutely no reason at all. That those people can't have that. Yes, it's a variance and I know you don't like variances. But there is no reason at all that those people can't have that. Three foot in croft set back. That's all we're talking about. They're not building a wall. There's nobody there. The native, as I understand it, all the neighbors didn't have a problem.
Have.
Well, what, there's four neighbors?
It was like twenty.
Riviera is on one side and three or four.
Everybody was in three hundred feet.
Whatever that means. I mean, anybody across the alley to me doesn't count. It's the houses right there. Maybe the bank and the Riviera. That's to me the people. Yes, I know you've got rules. But this stuff isn't carved in stone. That's what you people are for, is to.
So I have a question for you. I have a question for you. So every time I hand out a building permit or Emery does for us, we send a variance along with it. Because if somebody doesn't like the way the setbacks are, they can file a variance. Where do we draw the line? Where, where?
Not here.
And there's been a lot of people that have had to make way bigger concessions, monetary wise, anything. No one's denying them that. They can build that, just a different design. My, mine, on my house over there is thirty feet long, five feet out. It has no posts at all. And there's five to six feet of snow on it at times when the rest of it slides off the house.
Those sit here.
Yeah, the verticals.
Vertical posts.
Yeah. They could have the overhang.
So you can pitch, pitch it back at a forty-five degree angle against the building to hold it up and you wouldn't care?
Yeah, to a certain extent, yes.
Mine is.
For whatever. And that's all been conveyed. That was, that has all been conveyed.
Go look at mine over there.
Okay, yeah.
And I would think it would be better for them than they don't have posts there to mow around and, uh. Run into if you have way too much liquor some night or something.
A misunderstanding.
Yeah, there, no one's denying them.
Well, it's, it's this idea.
We're denying their posts that.
That twenty foot is carved in stone.
Yeah.
Like the constitution, it takes.
Right, but when you give someone three feet, then the next person you give them six feet, and then the next person you give them eight feet, like what in the hell's the point? And then makes, and then, and then why are we telling people you have to have your house so far back? And then those people comply. Meanwhile, they might not like it. There are people who comply. So that's all we're doing is try to instill some kind of consistency and she, and we're not denying somebody the ability to have a porch. It's like there's, it's not that there's no other option.
Yeah, there's just more. Except to just for the post signs for it. But then I say it'll work fine, just give a little bit of mind, I say it's good. And where theirs is at there, all they're ever gonna have on is natural snowfall. There's no, no, no snow coming off the house that's gonna get on it, like it does mine. I mean. Somebody else would have a snowstorm and look at mine.
Yeah, you probably got a couple of feet of snow on your.
But, yeah, and then it all slides down on that last four or five feet and then I have this much snow on it.
Not to get into your construction, assuming when you built the house, that was a long beam coming off of the house. You didn't tack it on later.
No, I had supports made, welded and bolted them to the house, which is what they could do there then.
Okay, and maybe, uh, I'm, I may be completely, I'm just, the I, I'm, I guess I'm hung up on this idea that that three feet is so sacred. Just because of the what ifs for the future. That's, that's what is bothering me about that.
Okay.
And so it's.
Well, thank you for your opinion.
You're, do as you want to.
Any other discussion? Okay, I have a motion on the table. I have a second to go ahead and not approve this variance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Not approved?
Hey, moving on, um. Ordinance eight eighty-two, we had the first reading last time. This is to just kind of bring up our fees for some of these applications, congruent costs. With other communities and to cover our costs, it is to go through these processes. So, along we need another reading.
Saratoga ordinance number eight eight two, an ordinance admitting title fifteen, chapter fifteen point zero four, section fifteen point zero four zero eight zero, as well as title eighteen. After eighteen point seven two, section eighteen point seven two point zero, four zero. E of the town of Saratoga with this code concerning building permit application fees as well as planning and zoning application and permit fees and to provide an effective date.
Is there any discussion? You have a motion to go ahead and. Approve ordinance number eight eighty-two, title fifteen slash eighteen, application fees on a second reading.
I'd make the motion to pass the second reading of ordinance number eight eighty-two.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Hey, um, number twenty-one, I gave you guys a packet there that had a bunch of sign examples and, and. Well, this is kind of working with the planning commission and Enoch from Royal Signs. This is, this is a vote that we came up with for a sign improvement project for town. Um, includes a couple of entrance signs, gateway signs that are in there, uh, wayfinding signs for pedestrians and for vehicular traffic. This will actually help us get rid of several signs along one thirty because we can consolidate them. I'm, I'm not asking you guys to approve us going and pulling the trigger on the project, right? I mean, I think there's some opportunity for us to get some grant funding. But if you're good with the scope, we could approve the scope of it, then we could, we, or we have a unified project that we can get funding for and start putting that implementation plan together. But I just, I mean, we've kind of bounced this around for, uh, quite a while and. I think it's, I think it'll be a pretty good project. It'll look good and get rid of some signs of this guy, or who the contractor. Fabricator, whatever you want to call it. He does a good job. He's done in communities all over the state. I think we can get at least half of that.
I like it.
A four.
I like the design. It fits Saratoga. Well, I really liked the sign coming in the town. The entrance sign in is cool. That would look really special on both ends of the town. And the planning commission has all went through.
Yeah, Paul was a, a big proponent.
We have two meeting workshop locations, the destination that we thought were the kind of, we found out, we're having a public, I divine. The last couple of months.
Where were you looking at certain, the, the kiosk type, right? Somewhere downtown.
So two of them, we have one here and we thought we would do one at like the hobo pool.
In downtown area, we weren't, we didn't have a specific location yet. We thought you could do it to the out here by the public bathrooms. Or if there's a spot on Bridge Street, like the corner of Bridge and Highway one thirty, I know that there's gonna be a. Something for students in that area also, or maybe.
Pretty good idea, right?
Next to, to regions.
Okay.
From the time that's a central.
But one in this general area.
Central area.
Well, I, uh. Really thank you guys for your work on this.
Where would the gateway signs?
So we would replace the two existing ones.
So in the same spot then?
Yeah, this one up here, we, um, we might have to adjust a little bit, um. To get out of, you gotta be so many feet away from the asphalt to alleviate the need for all this breakaway technology. I think that one's pretty close, but I might have to go to the, like a couple more feet, but the general same area. I've talked to Whiteout about, um, both of those locations.
What would the dimensions, rough dimensions on the gateway signs be?
I want to say they're like twelve feet by like six, says, is what we were, what we were looking at.
Really? Price on that.
I was, I was pretty pleasantly surprised.
Yeah.
We did go with square signs because they were forty percent cheaper than doing, uh, anything with the random mental. Because if they're square, they can just stamp them out. They don't have to C and C them.
Well, and I can speak for Enoch. I mean, he's, he's a good guy and he definitely stands by what he says he's gonna do. I've known him for a lot of years.
He was super helpful during this whole process. I mean, he provided a lot of slices and information. So I think he was very helpful. He had a new, like, that was remarkable and I mean, very helpful.
And then don't wait, finding signs, it seems like nearly other three and one, so he had some good designs.
He was at the WAM conference, had a booth set up WAM conference in Pinedale last summer.
He did. You don't want, you don't need any approval on this, just.
If you just a motion, approve the sign project scope, be helpful.
Uh, we'll just call it that. Do I have a motion to go ahead and approve the sign scoped project?
I'd make a motion to move ahead with it, look at it.
You have a second?
I'd second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Any planning questions? On the water and sewer joint fire report?
Sounds good to me.
Um, we got a meeting next week. We haven't had one since the last council meeting. But I don't have a ton to report on that. Just, I mean, we're sort of looking at water tank projects and, uh, big things on the docket for the future and kind of coming up together with. A plan of what maybe the next, you know, five, six years looks like and. Well, if we can get that together, that'll be useful. Give us things to work towards.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We'll move on to the recreation commission.
Um, Carter covered most everything that we talked about last night at the meeting. Um, we did have a couple ladies come in this last night. Um, that were expressing concern or questions as to the concrete. For the pickleball court over at Veterans Island, um, I guess is cracked, heaved, ten level. Um, so they just wanted to know if there was any plans for that in the future as well as. Um, the concrete up at Kathy Glode Park got brought up too, um, but we did, you know, just, you know, uh, tell them that. Brush crick has expressed some interest in helping out with that one. So that was really the only thing I had to bring to the council from the record meeting last night.
I did, I did talk to Leo about concrete, about Veterans Island. Just the concrete on anything, you know, six inches is gonna be like four dollars something square foot just for the concrete plus plate placement cost. I don't want to ask about the like one twenty by one twenties, it's like, you do concrete, just the concrete is gonna cost you like seventy-five grand.
Okay.
It's not gonna be cheap.
Is there any repairs that could be made to that that would?
We could do a little bit.
Lessen the expense?
You do a little bit of grinding and stuff, but it's, I think it's sitting right on the dirt. It's.
So it's where the ground's moving that's causing the problems?
Yeah. I don't think it's got a ton of base on there. If we come up with. Kind of bolt by, you could pad to do somewhere. Most beneficial thing to do, even more reviews.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll move on to the Saratoga Airport Advisory Board. The only thing I can report on that is, uh, they were gonna put their entrance sign up, uh. We did talk to, I did talk to the members on the airport board. They're gonna, where they were gonna. Where they had excavated out to put it was gonna be two, two major issues. One is gonna be right over the top of our sewer line. The other one is it's in wide out right away, not ours. So, uh, I believe the gentleman, the contractor come in, talked to Emery today. They're gonna move it back three feet, four feet.
Back even with the fence.
Even with the fence. So everything, everything's good on that. And, uh, that's all I have to report from the airport board. Any questions?
No.
We'll move on to the, uh, South Central Emergency Medical Service Board. Their meeting minutes are attached. Uh, I want to thank Emery. I, him and I went for a ride the other day. We did clean up around the ambulance barn up there. Uh, the boys were in there doing some more cleanup today. I'll see, get some of that rock out. They had dirt piled, piled around and everything. It didn't look, made it tough for us to mow, for one thing, but it, it looks a lot better. So I want to thank you and the crew for that. Okay, that's all I have on that. Any new business to be brought before the council? Any further business? I have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.